I appreciate the opportunity to come back before you today. You know, one of the first questions I think might be asked is, why are we back? And so I come back to you today to share significantly more detail as it relates to the nature of the development agreement and to the concerns of traffic and noise that were both expressed by the city council but also by neighbors in the surrounding areas of the project. And so I'm going to walk through a framework of a presentation that I think will put some significant details underneath what our plans are and want to open up to questions and conversations at any point along the way. And again, do appreciate the opportunity. I will be sharing a fair note about Notes Live. We'll be talking about the acoustics of the nature of a development like this. And we have Chris with Kimley &amp; Associates with us that will join, in addition to Matt with SEC Civil that will be sharing some about the improvements that we're committing to in conjunction with this project. So, open to questions at any point along the way. So, quick background about our company. We are based in Colorado Springs. We are an entertainment and hospitality company that seeks to provide premium experiences. That's our objective. We want to gather people around things that we have in common, which is music and food and hospitality. Our assets in Colorado today include Bourbon Brothers Smokehouse and Tavern, which is a six-star Diamond Award-winning restaurant that is also a part of our project here, in addition to what is the Boot Barn Hall, which is a 15,000-square-foot mixed-use but primarily seated music venue, typically seating between 480 and 500 participants for indoor concerts in Colorado Springs. Our campus is growing in Colorado Springs as we speak. We have the Boot Barn Hall and Bourbon Brothers, but we're also, and I'll talk a little bit about it, in the process of bringing the Sunset Amphitheater to the base of what I call Pike's Peak and the Air Force Academy there in northern Colorado Springs. Another asset that we have underway, and I would invite anybody from Murfreesboro. Murfreesboro reminds me a lot of where I live in Gainesville, Georgia. We're about halfway through the construction process of a development of a Bourbon Brothers Smokehouse and Tavern and Boot Barn Hall. This is the actual rendering of the building that is being constructed there that will be finished in the first quarter of 2023, and it is highly consistent with what our expectation is for the corner of Gateway Boulevard and Medical Center Parkway. The property in Colorado Springs is called The Sunset, and the idea is that we are going to start the concerts as the sun sets over America's mountain, which is Pike's Peak, which you will see kind of over the left shoulder of the stage there. To the right shoulder is the Air Force Academy, which runs for 13 miles down I-25. We're right across from I-25 in that location. That amphitheater is anticipated to be an 8,000-person capacity with an investment of about $40 million, hosting approximately 50 to 60 shows per year, serving southern Colorado that doesn't have an asset like this. You have to go up into Denver and North Denver to gain access to this type of entertainment. And in addition to that, one of the unique pieces of that environment that we plan to bring here are the idea of a VIP fire pit suite. So, we have 92 fire pit suites that have eight seats, each with their own fire pit with table service for the venue. I'll share a little bit about how we intend to incorporate that into our concept here in Murfreesboro. So, why Murfreesboro? Somebody asked me when I came in how many trips that I've made, and this is my 13th trip this year to the Nashville market. And we started looking in the general Nashville area for a number of different reasons. But we liked, after reviewing down the I-65 corridor and up in northern Nashville, frankly just fell in love with Murfreesboro after we got an opportunity to sit here and began to look also at its demographics sitting at the juncture of 841 and I-24. It has a great music history, but it doesn't have access to high-quality-produced environments for people to consume entertainment and concerts of this nature. One of the key reasons we want to be in Nashville is we have a long-term strategy as a company to monetize content centered around music. And what we mean by that is having the capacity to record concerts for acts that you might not otherwise be able to have the opportunity to see. One of the great examples would be the Bellamy Brothers. The Bellamy Brothers have a huge following online. They tour a little bit, but we anticipate being able to help them monetize their acts and at the same time bring additional revenue to our facilities by live streaming and creating concerts. So, the term "live from Murfreesboro" will be something that we believe will be consumed in every living room in the United States and frankly across the world. We're in discussions with the large content-producing entities that you would know by name for the purpose of beginning to put together the contracts that would allow us to produce these events out of Boot Barn Hall and out of the Sunset on the Stones River here in Murfreesboro. So, a quick overview of the property. The corner of Gateway Boulevard and Medical Center Parkway will have a Bourbon Brothers Smokehouse and Tavern and a Boot Barn Hall. Looks very consistent, if not almost exactly the same, as the picture that you saw in Gainesville. In addition to that, just down the road on Medical Center Parkway, we anticipate a 4,500 person Sunset Theater, and we'll call it on the Stones River. The Bourbon Brothers Smokehouse and Tavern will have the same menu as we have in Colorado Springs and Gainesville, Georgia. The Hall will provide an indoor, table-seated music and event venue capable of serving 500 guests out of the kitchen, and that is table-seated. A little different than Colorado, we will have about 480 people seated on the floor, and we'll have 16 tables in a mezzanine level that will be considered premium seating but serviced to all of the tables. One of the interesting things, I've got a couple of folks that have had interest in visiting our facility, and I've suggested that they go here at the end of August, where Shield 616 is partnering with a group from the Eagles Band to do a concert in our facility that also includes a fundraiser for the local police department's body armor that is necessary for them to be safe in specific events. Colorado Springs has experienced a lot of tragedies in that area, and we've been able to come alongside and help them do that through our facility. But it has been used for many other purposes as well, including the state of the state address by the governor, and the 250th anniversary of the city was done in our building on our campus from a celebration perspective. So, we anticipate the Boot Barn Hall will have a, targeting a seated capacity of 4,500 people and with an investment of $30 to $35 million. And, you know, when people think amphitheaters, 8,000, 12,000, those are very large crowds. What we're talking about here as it relates to that location is something akin to a large high school football game. So, it's a little bit of a different scale. It's going to be a more intimate venue than what you might see if you were to go into some of the Nashville facilities or other facilities. And we will host Grammy Award-winning acts from probably late April through October, what we say May through October, and it'll be an asset for other events such as graduations and other maybe drama-type uses that can be, you know, effectively produced within the context of an amphitheater. It will have stadium south seating and lawn seating. So, it'll have a variance of pricing approaches, so it'll be an asset that's available to the entire community. If you want to sit on the green and bring a blanket and sit down and watch a concert, if you want to buy a fire pit suite and sit with table service, both would be available. So, why is the development agreement important to Notes Live? I feel like that was one of the really key questions that we didn't effectively answer in our last visit to you guys. And the akin that I, the example that I can give to you is it's like going under contract on a house so that we can bring in the people to do the housing inspection and make sure that the elements that we understand to be true, we can put the money towards getting that done. So, it provides us the terms to invest. You will see that we are making commitments to significant improvements in and around the site. We still have to take the project through the, through the planning and DRC process. So, while this development agreement gives us a framework for the terms to proceed, this project is still fully subject to the, to going through our traditional planning process here in Murfreesboro, and we look forward to partnering with the city to do that. One of the big changes that we made, one of the pieces of feedback was that there's some basis in that land with the city, and would there be a consideration of paying a portion of that, or paying for the land? And so, we have modified the agreement to purchase the land, and we will do that over 20 years with the city. It will be consistent with the other developments in the Gateway in terms of its, of its purchase price. We'll now be fully subject to property taxes because we will have the full 18 acres under our, under our ownership. And we are also committed to specific use, so it's not a situation where we can take that land and begin to use it for any other purpose. We have in the development agreement specific hurdles related to the number of performances and the attendance at each of the performances, or it ends up tacking up to a, to a market rate. We have also committed, we, in partnership with the city, have completed some initial traffic studies. Chris will be here to represent that in just a moment. But we are committed to not only a full traffic study but also a full traffic management plan. If you were to talk to your compatriots in other cities, a lot of times the focus becomes almost exclusively about the infrastructure, but you will find that the traffic planning is as, if not more, critical than the infrastructure itself to a successful ingress and egress to a facility that's housing this quantity of people at any point in time. We are also committing to significant improvements on Medical Center Parkway, basically improving the turning and capacity for turning, the lights in the entire area surrounding our project, which we think will significantly improve the traffic flow when we have some of our larger events. One of the key things to note is that while it's a 4,500-person amphitheater, it's designed specifically to also host concerts that are more in the 1,500 to 2,000 range without feeling empty, because a lot of acts that we're going to be able to bring in here, that's going to be the range of population that would, would bring those acts to bear. So, the 4,500 full population, we anticipate being eight to 12 times per year. We've also drafted a shared parking agreement. The backside of that property will be specifically constructed to intersect with the, the trail system that the city has planned to go along the Stones River, and we will provide not only access but security and continued care for that three acres of parking that will be made available on the backside of the lot. So, economic impact, some of this is straight out of our business pro forma, which you can go and look at. That's publicly filed information. It has also been done by the, the audit firm that is affiliated with the Chamber of Commerce. So, I'll give you some general overview of what the anticipated economic impact is. But during the construction period, which we believe will be about 18 months for the Bourbon Brothers Smokehouse and Tavern and the Boot Barn Hall, and about 24 months for the Sunset, we anticipate $35 million to be invested, and it will support about 132 jobs and generate about $481,000 in taxes during that period. Once we're fully open, anticipating 140 equivalent full-time, it will be a combination of higher numbers of folks than that, but some of them part-time, given the nature of our business. Once the fully operational, the direct taxes for Murfreesboro are anticipated to be 1.6 million plus the 200,000 in property taxes, and the regional impact is anticipated to be over $2 million. Annual gross revenue of this facility for Notes Live will be between $32 and $35 million, and we'll draw visitors from the entire region. One of the things that we can expect is between 20 and 30% at a minimum of the tickets purchased for marquee shows will be done by people that live outside of Rutherford County. And for some specific shows, you might even see that number get up to 40 or 50. And so, the restaurants, the hotels, and the other assets that the city already has in place will see significant benefit from this as well. And we believe we'll bring live from Murfreesboro to every, every living room in the country. With that, I'll do a transition and ask Chris to come up from Kimley, and then after that will be Matt with, with SEC.
Good afternoon. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today. I'm a senior traffic engineer. My name is Chris Rhodes. I'm with Kimley-Horn &amp; Associates. I've worked both in the public and private sector here in Murfreesboro for a number of years. My goal today is not to bore you with a bunch of geeky details but to get you more comfortable with some of the preliminary traffic work that we've done looking at the site. Again, lots of data here. Spent some time with Bob to understand when his concerts and his venue peaks. Step back a little bit. Converting people to cars. Also considered ride share. Ride share will be a component that will happen, and we've seen that happen in sports and entertainment venues throughout the country as well. We looked at both inbound and outbound, sort of pre-show and post-show on a Friday. We looked at a maximum event, worst-case scenario. We also looked at a concert starting at 7:00, therefore starting earlier in the evening so that we're closer to that, what I'll call weekday PM peak rush hour. Where do we feel that the traffic will come from? As Bob had mentioned, we feel like we will certainly have a ingress of a pretty sizable percentage coming from the interstate, looking at upwards of 40% potentially entering and exiting from the interstate, roughly 30 to 35% coming from Broad Street, and then other venues coming from both Thompson Lane and then further west within the city and the county. So, that's how we routed the traffic into and out of the site within the street network. Also spent some time, the graph that you see, which is sort of the mountain there, that, that shows how traffic exists today on Medical Center Parkway, and that's based upon TDOT historical data that they capture each and every year. We also looked at, for a concert, when do we feel like the traffic will be entering the site and then exiting the site? And that's what you see in the dark blue in the far right there. And we also understand that in, in the past, this site has been looked at as a possible office park, and so we looked at what would an office park generate in terms of traffic? And that is your light blue number. So, I think the thing to, to understand here is if the development were to continue and be an office park, we would be generating traffic throughout the course of the entire day, whereas a concert, although it peaks, it will peak sort of on the back end of when we're experiencing rush hour traffic on Medical Center Parkway. Taking that a little bit further, again, the light blue is how traffic peaks throughout the day. The, what I'll call the green is if we put an office park on the site, how that traffic would be added. And finally, on an hourly basis, both ingress and egress, how that traffic sort of multiplies and adds to the existing traffic on the corridor on a Friday per se. And then finally, Monday through Thursday or Monday through Friday, again, if we have an office park, the smaller blue shows basically restaurant traffic that would happen associated with the development. The green shows what an office park would generate on a typical weekday, and then you see how that increases on a Thursday or Friday if we were to have a concert. So, again, just trying to give you an understanding of current traffic and then how much gets added to the existing traffic volume on Medical Center Parkway. And then finally, if you're not yet bored with numbers, we'll show you a few more. We looked at the 5:00 to 6:00 PM hour before a concert venue, the 6:00 to 7:00 hour on a Friday before a concert venue, and then once a concert releases in the evening. So, what you see in blue, and what I'll call royal blue, that is the percentage of traffic on Medical Center Parkway today. This represents traffic associated with the development, and then what I'll call the, sort of the grayish color, that is the remaining capacity that exists on the corridor. So, the corridor peaks during your PM rush hour between 4:30 and 5:30. So, you can see how the percentage of traffic today and how that, you know, coincides with what's left. So, I guess the story here is you have remaining capacity on the corridor even when we have a concert venue on a Friday. And then obviously, it gets a lot better when we get to 10 or 11 o'clock at night in the evening. I think another one of the things mentioned was hospital access, that being something that was mentioned earlier in the council meeting. Currently, the hospital has five points of access on Medical Center Parkway, Thompson Lane, and along Gateway Boulevards. There are five ways to enter and exit the hospital. In addition to that, in conversations with city staff and some of the ambulatory staff, we understand that Wilkinson Pike is often used as a bypass, is a somewhat easier way to get to the hospital during peak conditions throughout the day. So, there is access to the hospital. We don't feel like this project would overwhelm the ability to serve the medical community. Bob mentioned this earlier. Certainly, we're going to build turn lanes and traffic signals where warranted, but the success of a athletic or a special event venue is how can you manage things from a traffic perspective? So, we will be working with Bob and his team not only to do the traffic, detailed traffic impact study, but to also prepare a pre- and post-show traffic management plan. And I just rattled off a few of the things that we've been involved with here recently throughout the southeast, whether it be MLS coming to Nashville, Atlanta Braves Stadium that, I'm sure many of us have been to, Super Bowl LVIII. I think our message here is we've got a robust history of having coordinated with special event and entertainment-related or stadium or sports-related venues to put together a successful pre- and post-game traffic plan for the project. I'll conclude with this. I think what we're, what we want to make sure we convey to you today is that we feel like Medical Center Parkway can be managed along with the traffic associated with this development. We also believe that this development does not trigger the need for the city to invest in converting that road from a four-lane to a six-lane facility with this project. Certainly, the following items are needed. A detailed traffic impact study where we work with both engineering and planning staff to understand and get it approved upon, traffic impact study. Mentioned earlier, a pre- and post-show traffic management plan. And then, the city has a fairly robust centralized signal system where we can quickly push out special event timing plans, and that would be something that would be developed on a Friday afternoon to make sure that we're accommodating both commuter traffic as well as the need to serve traffic getting into and out of the development. That's a lot of data. I know, that's a lot of data. I will pause for questions if there's a question before we continue.
I have one question. What, on your percentages of where the traffic is coming from, and you, you mentioned Wilkinson Pike being used for the hospital, what, what level of traffic did you add to Wilkinson Pike? Since it terminates, you know, it, it's the, it's Gateway Boulevard, right? What level of traffic did you add to Wilkinson Pike?
We did not add any of the development traffic. We assumed a conservative approach of our traffic is going to use Medical Center Parkway to, to assume a conservative approach.
You're assuming that nobody's going to use Wilkinson Pike to get to this venue in your traffic study?
I think you could safely say that there will be some locals that will use Wilkinson. I'm, I'm a local. I live in Brentwood and travel to this area frequently to shop, but even as a traffic engineer, I still use Medical Center Parkway. But I, I think it's fair to say some might want to use Wilkinson Pike, but we wanted to be conservative. Let's assume worst-case scenario, all of our development traffic decides to use Medical Center Parkway, and we feel like we can accommodate that.
What would a detailed traffic impact study have? What, what are we going to have in addition to what you've provided with us so far?
Yes, sir. So, we would meet with both planning and engineering and set the scope of the study. And so, I'd like to say we will drill down into each intersection and determine, do we need additional turn lanes? Do we need additional signal phases? Do we need an additional signal at a location? So, it is a very detailed look at both the corridor in front of the development as well as each of the individual intersections that we would push traffic through. Prelimarily, our study was going to go all the way out to the interstate and all the way to the east to Broad. So, it's a, it's a pretty sizable scope of what we're going to look at from a detailed perspective.
With that detailed perspective, would that take into account Wilkinson Pike?
If we, if, if you as the city or engineering or planning feels that Wilkinson Pike is a concern, yes, we would, we would certainly look at Wilkinson Pike.
What's the correlation between the onsite parking for the venue versus the traffic plan and the impact on traffic? I was at the Nashville Soccer Club this past weekend for a game, and obviously, they, they cannot accommodate enough parking there for that site. So, I would say each site probably has its own unique challenges as far as traffic getting in and out in the study, but just based on your experience, it appears that there's pretty good parking available at this site. Will you comment about that related to the traffic plan and the study, just from your experience?
So, I'm going to make an assumption, and Bob, if I state this incorrectly, be sure to correct me. I would assume that the development would be required to park what they need onsite. That would be my understanding. And you, and you mentioned Geodes Park. That's the fairgrounds in Nashville. One of the, one of the challenges with that project is it does not sit within the CBD of Nashville where we have structured parking everywhere. And again, that's the largest MLS stadium in America, and it's 30,000 people. And they, they've gotten phenomenal numbers since they've been in, in process.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am?
In the information you, you have submitted to us to review and what you've said today, so we are anticipating the crowd to start at approximately, I say, 5:00 to 7:00 as far as the crowd coming into the venue. So, I've taken a few notes here. So, what you're saying your plan is, is you're going to develop a right turn on Gateway off of Medical, and you're going to have an extra, extra left-hand lane to Medical Center Parkway? Is that, are those two things correct?
I believe that is what is structured within the agreement, but, but I would add that the traffic study would validate the need for that, yes.
Mr. Taylor? After you're done asking these important questions, we're going to go over and show you exactly what we've already committed to inside the development agreement, and those will be considered minimums. It's a traffic study that Kimley-Horn will undertake after this. We may have to do something more, our turn lengths may have to get longer, so I can show you those exactly, and I think that'll help answer that question.
Okay, and I assume you're going to engage in a plan that's going to mitigate some of the traffic as we move on with the project? If you see other things that need to be done, you're going to...
If the traffic impact study identifies an issue outside of the, the intersection serving the development, by all means, that's part of the traffic impact study requirements is you can't make an off-site intersection fail and not at least have some sort of mitigation to improve that.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? All right, Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, Matt Taylor of SEC. I just wanted to go over the very specific improvements that we have already committed to inside the development agreement. I think it's a pretty lengthy document. We've got all these spelled out in written terms, but, you know, if you're anything like me, a picture is much better than those words unless you're an attorney. You know, the plan itself, you, you're familiar with where it is. A big part of our plan, obviously, is going to be parking onsite and people showing up and driving here, but again, back to the hotels and people coming from surrounding areas. We know that ride share has become a much more important component of any large event space. I was at the Indy Grand Prix this weekend, and they had ride share planned on, I think that's Woodland Street, right before you get on I-24, or I-40 right there. Seemed like a terrible idea because it's causing everything to back up. We have planned for that stacking to be onsite at this location. I believe we anticipate about 20% of our participants or our visitors to come through ride share at this location, so it's a very important component of our plan. We also do anticipate that there will likely be some off-site share, off-site parking in our largest events. Our parking onsite will be able to host all of our restaurant parking as well as anything that goes on inside of Boot, Boot Barn right there. It's the largest sellouts of the amphitheater that we would need off-site parking for this, so that would be that eight to 12 times a year that Mr. Mudd mentioned earlier. We have talked to the city. I think the development agreement also mentions this, that we could possibly utilize some overflow parking in city, city property on the east side of the Fire Hall, and they would access that through a couple of different pedestrian ways shown here in the yellow. Specific improvements that we have already committed to inside of our development agreement, we've estimated these to cost in the realm of a million, 1.5 to $2 million. Each of these individually will start on the west side. So, we'll be constructing an additional right turn lane along Medical Center Parkway on the Gateway Boulevard, and then we'll also be constructing an additional left-hand turn lane on Gateway Boulevard on the Medical Center. That will obviously require some modifications to signals as well as probably some accepting lanes at the nose of that median out in Medical Center Parkway as well. So, we'll be undertaking these. On Medical Center Parkway itself, our central access, which will line up into what many of us probably say is the main entryway into the fountains, we'll be constructing a right turn lane along Medical Center Parkway. We'll also be constructing a left turn lane along Medical Center Parkway into our site. And then the easternmost access, kind of the back door into the fountains today, we will be completely installing a new signal. This access has always been planned to be a signal. You can see the striping out at the fountains. They've actually preserved a through lane for this future roadway on this side, and so we will finish that signal with our project. We'll also be re-striping to add a left turn lane along Medical Center into this new access. We'll be completely constructing about 300 to 400 feet of new private street along the... We'll be completely constructing about 300 to 400 feet of new private street along this access point. This will also connect into Raffa Lane, which the Swanson family constructed two to three years ago to the east of this project that feeds back to the fire hall. And then we'll be constructing an additional right turn lane along Medical Center Parkway to access this new road. The city, as you all know, will be constructing several new improvements along Medical Center. Those will be broken up into a couple of phases. Phase two stretches from basically our eastern access point all the way back to Thompson Lane. That would take that to a six-lane section. And then from our eastern access point back to Broad Street would be phase three. And so the estimated construction timeframe, I believe, is still in the fall of 2023 for phase two, and then the spring of '24 for phase three. Our estimated construction time, we estimate to be completed somewhere between those two timeframes, maybe be operational in 2024, I believe. Correct, Bob? And so we think those will fall right in line with those. And then, of course, the city has already, I believe they've already funded this improvement to add an actual connector street from the end of Gateway Boulevard, which is to the west of our project, back down to Robert Rose Drive, which will act as an additional connector and let traffic in those large events disperse quicker and keep them off of Medical Center Parkway. Do you want to take this back over, Bob? And I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after Bob is done with rest.
I have a question. So on Gateway Boulevard, right there.
Yes.
Is that something, if the traffic plan comes back, that you need four lanes there for access in front of the frontage? That that's something y'all would have to look at?
Yes, sir. So right now, we have committed to a minimum inside the development agreement on those turn lanes as far as how long they would be and what time, what kind we need, but if it comes back that we need to take out the whole median as you come into our site, that's the exact, that's the exact sort of thing that that traffic study would address, absolutely.
Couple key elements, just sitting in this project and studying it substantially. The improvements that are in plans for the city will all be done before, and I'm talking about the extensions in both directions, before the sunset opens. The earliest the sunset would open would be 24 months from the point that we got an LDP, and we're still a good distance away from that. So from a timeframe perspective, I think that is, that's a good timeframe for those improvements to be made, given that the current assessment is that the current infrastructure could accommodate it, but with just a little bit of capacity left, and that would end up bringing substantial additional capacity to bear. The next piece is, to some of your all's question, and yours specifically, Rick, is the new, the detailed traffic study. The city has submitted to us 12 specific locations in our area that they want detailed traffic analysis for the purposes of developing strategies to manage traffic in those intersections. So we've committed to the specific intersection, to do a study to the specific intersections that would be cause of concern or maybe, depends on need for future improvements. Another point of emphasis is, after our last meeting, I have met with some, if not all, of the surrounding neighbors. I will also share with you guys that obviously, the hospital is not just a concern of the hospital, but it's a significant value to us that we're good neighbors to the hospital. We wouldn't open an amphitheater that became something that in any way disrupted one of the more critical assets to the city. And I have provided all of this relevant information to the city a little over a week ago, or last week, so that they had access to the same information that I did and have had some level of detailed discussions with them.
Hospital?
You said city.
To the hospital administration, the leaders of the hospital administration.
One of the concerns, that there was a level of specificity that was desired to get our arms around, was acoustics. And I am not an expert in acoustics, but I've become quite familiar as it relates to these amphitheaters, walking through a number of these projects around the United States at this stage. And we have engaged for this project, a group out of New York City called Listen Consultants, LSTN. They are expert acousticians. They do a lot of work in urban and suburban areas and have been a resource to venue operators like Live Nation in multiple markets. They've done an initial study here. What you'll see here is three mitigating strategies that we have as it relates to the sound that's going to come from this, from the outdoor venue. And there are three areas that we are focused on. One is physical mitigation. The second is electroacoustic mitigation, and the third is operational mitigation. The current site plan is very specific to orienting the distribution of sound, of which I will show you a specific map on how that sound distribution will travel as it relates to the site, but in particular consequence is what would happen, what would happen with the construct of this as it relates to the impact on the hospital, which is almost 1,500 feet away from the back of our stage. And so the first level of strategy that we've implemented is the positioning of the stage towards the Stones River and a golf course. For a suburban environment, you almost couldn't have a better scenario than being able to direct this towards what is the golf course, some sound mitigation, vegetation, and beyond that, a retail area instead of a housing area. The second is, we have positioned the artist's compound, I guess, on the northwest side of the venue, which will be a two-story edifice that will be at the screening side as it relates to the travel of sound towards the hospital, which is an intentional strategy. And then we're going to raise the rake bowl seating. You're going to see the seating come up, and when I show you the electroacoustic approach, you'll understand why that's critically important. When you look at sound and the way that it travels, you're focusing on two different levels. You're focusing on your high-decibel and your low-decibel. High-decibel sounds have a propensity to travel a long way and be very directional. Low-decibel sounds have a propensity to kind of bleed but not go as far directionally. And so what you see here is the electroacoustic approach to the mitigation, and we are committing to some very specific strategies to ensure that we don't, that we are good neighbors there on Medical Center Parkway. Number one is, we're going to mandate only vertical array speakers, and not to get into detail, but they will be hung no higher than 40 feet off the ground, and they will be in a shape of a C, which gives you directional control over your high-decibel sounds. Additional to that, we're going to implement what is called a delay cluster, which allows us to serve the backside of the venue, not by the speakers at the stage, but by speakers that are positioned at the back, which allows you to give specific directional control so that it doesn't bleed over and across the Stones River. And we're going to cap the height of that at 40 feet, and we'll put that in our riders with all of our artists. The second piece of this is, of the electroacoustic is to position, you can see the positioning of the sound. The high density is the red, which will be focused towards the river. The blue is the, and the green is the more low-density, and you can see it kind of generally bleed. So the third piece is operational control of acoustics. Number one, we'll limit the hours of shutdown. We will incorporate sound detection systems. We have not, you know, covered this base with the hospital, but we would commit to putting an electroacoustic device, sensing device, at the hospital to make sure that we do not exceed the acceptable limits of the city, and we will include these limits in our contract, which is a typical practice in this industry. So to give you a sense, this is the initial modeling done by Listen Consultants. Without any variance to code, St. Thomas would typically fall in the 70 dB limit, and given the way the code is written in Murphysboro, that it is considered a sound-sensitive zone, it would go down to 65 decibels. So you would see on a typical concert, which is what's modeled here with a traditional sound system, that with mitigation, as designed, the sound at the hospital would resonate at about 61 decibels at the, where the hospital building starts. And to give you a sense, this is straight out of the Peterson and Gross, which is a standards-based use of sound. That would be equivalent to riding on the inside of a car at 50 miles an hour or being in a large store like a Home Depot. So that would be the level of sound that would travel into the reverse side of the venue at the hospital. So this is a lot of technical stuff. Any questions as it relates to that?
Couple of questions.
Yes.
I've been studying a little bit the sound ordinance for the city, what we have, and your project is going to be in what we call a noise-sensitive zone, which includes hospitals, schools, churches, and everything. On the slide you just presented, how many decibels did you say your theater is going to, as far as sound?
1,500 feet to the rear of it would be 61 dB at its height.
Right. Okay, and that will be in line with our city ordinance.
Yes.
If your sound happens to exceed the decibels that we have in our city ordinance, we have a process that we go through, which we probably won't go through because, you know, what you presented, it sounds pretty reasonable. But as far as your whole project, and looking at your sound, looking at your traffic, and you have addressed very well all of these things very clearly. I was a little confused, but now I'm very clear on it, and I appreciate that. But with your plan that you have submitted so far, I assume this is going to be the plan. Would you be willing to give us a complete plan so we'll have a way of measuring in writing what you say you're going to do? And if something goes wrong or is not to our satisfaction that's in your plan, would you be willing to fix it?
Absolutely. So two dimensions of this, and I've had the discussions with Gordon. We are getting ready to invest a significant amount of money into a project, and we do not want to start with being anything but a collaborative neighbor. And with an asset as important as a hospital, whether it's ingress and egress, or sound, or any other potential impact, we are going to be proactive in working with our neighbors to address those concerns. Now, to your specific question as it relates to acoustics, we will place, which is a traditional practice, sound detection devices at our perimeter, and this will be done based on, with the signing, assuming we get to the point of this development agreement, we will do a Level 2 acoustics design here, where they will come onsite, put devices all around the region, emanate sounds, measure those sounds, so that we can put control devices that will allow us to operationally intervene. At the end of the day, we won't be the mixing people at the board that is sitting at the back of a concert. They bring their own folks in. They bring their own systems in. But what we do have control, both contractually and operationally, is if there becomes a variance that's detected, we have both the legal and the operational capacity to bring it down so that we ensure that we abide by the city's policies, and that's what we will do. That's what we do at all of our facilities. That's what you can expect at Fiddler's Green in Red Rocks in Colorado, and we'll be doing the same thing here.
Because I know when you first came to us with your plan, that we were giving it away to you, and now it's no longer free, that you're going to be giving us approximately $163,353, and you're going to give that to us by 20 in 20 payments, and you all promised to pay us the first of July for 20 years. So that's a big thing, you know, a big difference. But, and you've explained everything very well. I just want to make sure, you know, words, sometimes are words, but just make sure that we get all of this in writing so we'll have a way of measuring everything, get it in writing, and, you know, it should be good.
I appreciate that, and I would say a couple of things. You know, from a relational perspective, I would encourage you to reach out to the mayor of Colorado Springs, to the city council of Colorado Springs, of which we've been operating for a number of years, and get a sense of the type of business that we're going to operate in your community. We're going to be a partner. Beyond that, we are going to be going through the whole planning process, which has the controls in place. I'll commit to sharing our acoustics Level 2 study with that committee so that we can work together to an architectural approach and an electroacoustic approach that ensures that we are good stewards of the regulations the city has put in place to serve this community in addition to the gateway overlay.
Oh, yeah. There's no doubt we feel that you're going to do what you say you're going to do. Just from a business standpoint, I'll be satisfied when it's in writing and signed by both parties, and that's a good thing.
I appreciate that. Most of what you're talking about is assumed in the development agreement. Some of this will need to be a part of the process of going through the planning commission.
Oh, yeah.
And we fully, we fully are committed to that process.
Yeah, what the two parties agree on, I'm saying, as long as we have it in writing.
Agreed. Yes, ma'am.
Let me just confirm. I think I heard you right, that you've offered to purchase sound detection equipment for the hospital on their side.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And that would be, that would be a typical practice to ensure that we control operationally. Any deviations that may occur during a show that shouldn't be occurring, yes.
Just making sure.
So in closing, I'll say what I've already said to a degree. We adjusted the economic terms based on some feedback. We proceeded with an acoustic study, a Level 1 acoustic study. We've met with many of the neighbors, some that are in this room, to understand their concerns. I've shared the information related to acoustics and related to traffic to each of those that I have spoken with, and we're working with traffic consultants. I've got the agreement that we have agreed to in hand that was predominantly driven by the administration's desire to understand the impact of traffic and to, for us to work together to plan at a macro level, and we look forward to partnering with the city of Murphysboro and having leadership here that is collaborating with you, not just on a business, but on helping Murphysboro improve the life of the city for the people that live here as well, because it's going to be a very valuable asset, in my view, going forward for the city. So I'll pause with any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Mudd?
I appreciate you all a great deal. I've found some friends in Murphysboro, and I've also found even folks that have some questions and concerns to be fantastic to work with, so we appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.